What it means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home. So when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer, and that's used to disperse medication that I need to get myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets if needed. It's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed. The power may be out. So you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuee.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name is Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 2-1-1 call center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 2-1-1 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 2-1-1 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in Paradise. And first, the house phone rang. Picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house, and we're watching a fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop.
Good morning, everybody. Can it get started? Good morning, and welcome to the October 28th Board of Supervisors meeting up here in lovely Truckee. It was a gorgeous drive up here this morning. Only got stopped once, which was great. But thanks for everybody who made the time to come up and to come to our meeting today. Would you please stand for the pledge? Mandy, will you lead us in the pledge?
The flag of the United States of America. The Republic. A nation. Invisible. With the unity of us.
Any corrections or deletions to the agenda this morning?
No corrections or deletions to the agenda, Chair.
Great, thank you. And I apologize upfront. It's been about five years since I've chaired a meeting, so I'm going to do the best that I can. Our chair is out of town today. So because of a small time delay of approximately 40 seconds on the online cable livestreams, members of the public wishing to make public comment by phone should call in in the beginning of each agenda item rather than waiting until you hear us call for public comment. If you wait to call in, the comment period may be over because of the delay. So you'll be able to listen to the board discussion on the phone, and we will call you in and take your call in the appropriate order. For those in the room, please remember to mute your microphones when you are not talking. This will help us to avoid feedback. And, you know, in our home place, they get to control our voice. We get to control it up here, so. All right. Our first item is the consent calendar. These items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. The Board of Supervisors will act upon them at one time without discussion. Any board member may request that an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion. Members of the public wishing to ask questions or hear discussion on items listed under the consent agenda may now raise their concerns to the board members. The supervisors will take these concerns under consideration and decide if there is adequate reason to remove the item from consent. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on the consent items today? Items 1 through 19? Right. If anybody wants to call in, now's your opportunity. Any calls thus far?
No callers so far.
Being no public comment, we will close the public comment for consent. Is there anybody on the board who wishes to pull an item from the consent? And I would entertain a motion and a second to approve the consent.
So moved.
Second.
Real call?
District 5.
Yes.
District 2.
Yes.
District 4.
Yes.
District 3.
Yes.
District 1 is absent.
All right. Okay, our first item for today after consent is our department head matters, and I'm going to turn this over to our CEO, Allison Lehman.
Thank you, Vice Chair Swarthell. I'm really pleased to introduce our partners with the Tahoe Forest Health System, who are here today to give an overview of the hospital. Anna Roth is the relatively new president and CEO of the hospital. She's been a wonderful addition to our community with a long history of healthcare administration. She's going to introduce her team that's with her today and then provide an overview of their community health assessment, and then engage in any questions that the board may have. So thank you all for being here. We appreciate you.
Good morning. Good morning, Supervisors. I am Anna Roth. Thank you so much for the kind introduction. I am the president and CEO of Tahoe Forest Hospital, and I'm delighted to join you this morning to just give you a quick update on the state of the hospital. But really, it's going to be a sprint because I actually have a special treat for you all, which is we are going to go over our community health needs assessment, which we know is really important to ensure that we are providing you with an update on kind of what our community is looking for, what they're facing, the challenges we're facing here in this community. Just a brief overview, that our health system is made up of a hospital in Truckee, a critical access hospital, and a small hospital in Incline Village. And then we have urgent care and clinics in Tahoe City across Truckee, and also we have some urgent care in Incline, as well as primary care. I do want to give you a little bit of a makeup. We're going to go over some stats in just a few minutes, but I just want to say that our hospital system has been undergoing stratospheric growth in the recent years. We really are, we are a 25-bed hospital with some long-term care. We're a very small hospital, really critical access, you know, in bold cap blocks over an incline with four beds and a very critically important emergency department. But actually, our biggest book of business is the outpatient. It's about 87% of our business. So when I go over the, some of the stats, which I've just brought you a few today, I won't, it won't be death by PowerPoint by any means, but it, just bear in mind that actually, we are a very large outpatient system for the size of the hospital that we have. Quickly, here is our service area. This should be familiar to all of you. This is really showing that we actually play a fairly outsized role for, even though many people think of a small hospital in Truckee, we're actually serving many, many people. This is our primary service area. I will just say that about 60% of our business comes from this area, but the rest of the 41 actually is outside of this primary service area. So it's just something important as we think about planning, that those people who visit and those people who have second homes here, they are a really important component of people who we serve. So we actually have kind of this dual role. It's no surprise to all of you that we actually have to flex quite a bit during the week. We're about 17,000 here in this region, like in the Truckee region, and maybe, you know, add a few more thousand. But on the weekends and on a holiday weekend, we flex quite a bit. And if you were to walk into our emergency departments anywhere or urgent care across the system, those holiday weekends, they are hustling, very much so. Speaking of hustle, this is just a couple of, I just wanted to give you a couple of stats. This last year, we saw about 55,000 patients system-wide, 15,000, over 15,000 from Truckee alone. We have a pretty big orthopedic footprint, about 15. We're working on, we expect to hit over 15,000 this year. 17,700 emergency room visits is actually quite busy for the number of rooms that we have. There's a lot of bed turnover in that ER. One of the things that I think is really phenomenal about this and very surprising for me, as was stated, I came from a large county health system in the Bay Area, and it wasn't unusual for me to walk into one of my emergency services and it was just packed to the, from, you know, kind of the front door, even out into the outside. These are, this represents a lot of bed turns in these emergency room visits, but if you walk into our waiting room, it is often empty because our staff room people so quickly because they really, our emergency room is a Level 3 trauma center, and they take that really seriously. So they really know how to move people through, and it's just a very, it's a very breathtaking to watch how efficient they are. If you haven't seen it, we do have a world-class cancer center that's located here in Truckee. I do want to just pause for a moment and say that cancer center is here because of the engagement of our community. The Community Advisory Committee in 2012 really pushed, and really it was years up to that, to really get that cancer center open. And because of that, people actually come from all over to get their cancer center, their cancer care here because it is one of the best in the country. And then we also, I think, the reason that we have sort of these babies born at our facility is because this is another really, I think, unique and differentiating feature of our critical access hospital, our rural hospital. Many hospitals are actually closing their OB services and have over the years. There's been a trend of this. So that we, again, have a very, very award-winning OB women's health program in our facility, so I just wanted to highlight that out. And there's many, many more things I could say, but I just kind of wanted to give you a brief kind of overview of some of the impact that we're having in the critical and I think outsized role that this small health system actually plays in this community. That said, we know one of our biggest challenges is actually access, and we do have plans to increase that access. So this is just, this is our board, our governing board, and we just wanted, I just wanted to highlight that we do have three fairly large projects that are underway, two in the town of Truckee itself, kind of on Donner Pass Road, very adjacent to kind of, or proximate to the main hospital campus. And then we also have an expansion going on in Tahoe City. These three put together over the next two years will increase our ability, new visits, clinic visits by 50,000. And if you, if you saw that, I said we saw about 50,000 patients, that's a pretty big expansion, like 34%. So that will be really important because, again, we know that access to care is the most important thing, particularly now. We also know that outpatient care is really where people are getting their care. I mean, the things that are going on in outpatient are just, you know, I started as a nurse in, early in my career, and the things that I used to see in the hospital, we now see in the outpatient, and the things that are going on in the hospital used to be at like a big tertiary medical center. So like, we have really changed medical technology, and so it's, we're very proud to say that our system is really working to keep up with all of those changes and the increasing, I think, demands and needs of this community. We, I wanted to just bring a little bit of our community engagement and planning timeline because I think there's so many things to talk about. We could talk about healthcare reform, but I'm not going to. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I will do a spoiler alert to say I don't have a crystal ball, and we know there's a lot of policy work going on. And I think what we're really trying to do is ensure that we approach all of the, think, opportunities and challenges in the coming years with resilience and also in service to our community. So it's really important that we spend time, and we will be spending time in this next year actively engaging with our community. We actually, we do have a legacy of that. I talked about the cancer center. But in this coming year, we will be spending, I think, a much more targeted time engaging with our community for our planning for the next 10 years, the next 20 years. So again, I won't read this all to you, but you can kind of see in the big, in the green boxes, the highlights of kind of how we're marching out that engagement over the next year. So I want to talk a little bit about just one example of what we've done as it relates to community planning and engagement in partnership with our community, and that is taking a closer look at our community health needs assessment. This work has been led by Lizzie Hennessy and her team. She is our population health analyst. She is incredible, amazing. She spends a lot of time, in fact, almost all of her time, with her feet on the ground out in the neighborhoods, in the community, across our region. So without further ado, I will actually hand over to Lizzie. She can walk you through that, and it will highlight some of the needs that we're, that have been brought to us by our community. And then after that, when we're done, we're happy to answer questions. So thank you so much. Lizzie.
Good morning, and thank you for allowing time to share the most recent needs assessment. I also want to share, this is complimentary to the report you received in March from Kathy Cahill for the county-level community health assessment. As Anna mentioned, we cover two states and multiple counties, so it's a little different lens and different needs than were identified in the county-level assessment focused solely on Nevada County. During the next few minutes, I'm going to highlight why we do a needs assessment, our methodology, which does differ a little bit from the county's approach, and Nevada County uses the same approach as Placer County. So that's, there's standardization there, but Tahoe Forest uses a different, more health system approach for our primary service area. I'm going to have one slide that's really aggregating our needs, but I'm not going to drill down into data. However, I am going to show you where you can access the data yourselves and really see what stands out to you versus me taking up a few pieces to share with you. And then I do want to spend some time talking about prioritization that our community members have identified thus far, just in the last few months. Community health assessments are really data-driven systematic tools to identify what are our local needs of concern, and more importantly, make an intentional decision to put our resources and time and energy to address those needs. Collectively, there are three goals for a needs assessment. We want to improve health status, and I don't solely mean physical health status, but mental health status, as well as your physical well-being, ultimately to elevate your overall quality of life and to elevate the overall quality of life of our residents. Alongside with collecting data on health status and health behaviors, we collect sociodemographic information, so income and gender and age, for example. And the reason we do that is because then we can identify the subpopulations that are experiencing disparate health outcomes, and we can intentionally focus our resources on those populations that are more vulnerable or more at risk versus those who are doing really well. And at the end of the day, we want to increase accessibility to preventive services, and this helps drive the first goal in improving health status, but also it helps to identify diseases earlier and reduce treatment costs. But as a health system, Tahoe Forest does a needs assessment to really hear a community voice. Only a fraction of a patient's health experience is reflected in a patient chart. And more importantly, not everybody is seeking care at Tahoe Forest Health System, so we can't rely on an electronic health record to really get a picture of our community health status. We want to have a better understanding of what is really going on in the community, what are the experiences, what are the behaviors, what are needs we can't identify in a chart. And we want to be responsive and responsible in allocating our means to address those needs. As Anna mentioned, we have a large service area, and for this reason, we did rely on some secondary data. That's data we're not collecting directly, but data at the county level or the census data, for example. However, we do want to hear from our community, and so for that reason, we included three primary data collection methodologies. We did key informants surveys online to help with accessibility. We did a customized, population-based, local health survey, and we did focus groups. When I refer to secondary data, I'm referring to data collected by somebody else that's not Tahoe Forest. For example, Tahoe Truckee Unified School District, every two years completes the California Healthy Kids Survey, and that is directly asking youth about their health experience. So we rely on that to inform the youth element in our needs assessment. If you are to read the report, you will see mortality and vital statistics in there, and I want to be really clear that because we cover multiple states and multiple counties, we consolidated the three primary, the biggest counties that make up Tahoe Forest Health System's service area and that mortality data. So when you read this, please know it's not solely Nevada County mortality data. It's actually all of Washoe County and all of Placer County and all of Nevada County. If you were to read the report and look at our mortality statistics, important to know, that little side note. Online key informants, we invited 130 people, and some of you are in this room, to participate in a 20-minute key informant survey. We had 61 physicians and social service leaders, everyone from librarians to first responders were invited to participate in Nevada states, in Nevada County, and Placer County. And we asked them to respond and on behalf of the populations they serve and because they really are embedded in our local community. We did a customized local health survey that included over 100 survey items from validated questions to ask our community, specific questions on health behaviors and experienced health status, et cetera. But more importantly, before we landed on a survey tool, we reached out to 100 community partners to get their feedback on our survey tool, and we directly incorporated that feedback into our survey. For example, I attended one subcommittee for Nevada County on the Early Learning and Childhood to further discuss our question related to barriers in accessing healthcare because of childcare needs. You see that reflected in our survey questions, just our community response in the structure of the survey. And we had nearly 700 people participate on our population-based survey, which is a statistically valid number for our population. And because we use these validated questions that are from, for example, the Behavioral Risk Factor Surveillance Survey, or United States Department of Agriculture, or UCLA, we can follow these questions through time, and we can see how we compare to Nevada states or California or the nation in terms of our health needs. And another form of qualitative data, which the online key informant survey was as well, were focus groups. We did three targeted focus groups, each one partnering with a community organization. We partnered with Tahoe Truckee Unified School District to use the findings from their annual youth forum in our needs assessment. This is a forum they do every year with multiple community partners to directly hear youth voice. We partnered with a Truckee Rec Center and their Golden Hour, if you're familiar with the Senior Golden Hour, to do a focus group at the Golden Hour. And we partnered with our wonderful community partner, Sierra Community House, to do a focus group as well in Spanish in Kings Beach. We also partnered with Sierra Community House to do Spanish language outreach to subpopulations we know from previous needs assessments to be underresponsive. So we had community health workers equipped with tablets, and they helped community members complete the survey at food distributions, at family advocacy events, et cetera. This whole slide is really trying to show that we really reached out to the community to try to have a comprehensive picture of our health needs in multiple states and multiple counties. And again, I'm not going to share any data, but I'm going to show you where you can access the data. All of the community health needs assessments and community health improvement plans are on our community commitment webpage. From there, you can read the 2025 needs assessment, and I will let you know, it's around 200 pages. But most of that are graphs that break down the health need by age, by sex, by ethnicity, by zip code in some cases. So I really do encourage you to look at the report, just peruse it. If that doesn't sound appealing, you can watch a 60-minute presentation that took place a couple weeks ago that we're calling the Community Forum, and we recorded this event, so you can watch it. And finally, I'm not going to go into this dashboard, but we have TahoeForest.healthforecast.net. And if you click on that, you will see the broad health categories, for example, oral health. And if you click on oral health, it'll pull up the direct data in a graph format that, again, is breaking up by age and in some cases, zip code, et cetera. So I really encourage you, hopefully, there's a way for any person to interact with this data in a way that works for them. We tried to make it really accessible. Ultimately, we do this again to identify areas of need and areas of opportunity, and there are a few different ways that we land on these areas of opportunity. One is with trending. So as I mentioned earlier, we've done a lot of these needs assessments. The first one Tahoe Forest completed was in 2011, and because we're using these validated questions, we can actually trend some of our health metrics since 2011. That's one way that we identify an area of opportunity. If the trend is worsening, it's lending up as a need. Another way is with overall prevalence. So if we have higher prevalence than California or Nevada State or the nation, it's an area of opportunity. There is also statistical significance that comes into play, so if there are changes that are statistically significant or a subpopulation that you can see is having a worse outcome in a measurable statistical manner, it's an area of opportunity. So when we start to gravitate towards metrics that are meeting that criteria, we're seeing access to healthcare, which includes access to preventative care and oral health as an area of need. Specific quantifiable metrics within access to healthcare include having a primary care provider, that's PCP, or routine checkups. In 2021, we saw a significant decline in accessing routine care. I don't think that would surprise anybody in the room. We are continuing to see this as a need on which we should focus as a health region. Additionally, we asked if people had ever been diagnosed with cancer, and if so, what type of cancer? Skin cancer is the number-one cancer site that our community has reported experiencing here. And stroke is one that came up at the county level for mortality, and again, [inaudible]. And again, county's not just Nevada County. We're looking at all of Washoe County and Placer County as well. So there's a few specific metrics that come up under access to healthcare, preventive care, oral health, et cetera. Mental health is another area of opportunity. And we, as a region, have put a lot of effort into mental health because this has been identified quantifiably as a need since that first needs assessment in 2011. However, in response to that, Tahoe Forest has built a behavioral health department. And Tahoe Truck Unified School District has put an immense amount of resources into place-based care in the schools. However, this continues to be a need. And I don't want that to get lost despite the significant efforts that have gone into addressing mental health. What is coming up as a large need are all the health-related social needs. Specifically, food insecurity has increased. And not just for our community members who have an income level below the 200% of the federal poverty level, but in general throughout our community, we're seeing an increase in food insecurity. And when I say food insecurity, I'm not talking specifically about hunger. I'm talking about people are worried about being able to purchase more food or they're running out of food before they can purchase more. There's actually two different questions for that. Housing, as this audience knows, continues to be a need. Transportation. Health literacy is a health-related social need. And I think what might first come to mind for people is a language barrier. For example, English is a second language, and that's not exactly what we're talking about. There's also simply understanding that which your healthcare provider is saying to you in a way that's understandable, even if you speak the same language as your healthcare provider. Caregiving is also coming up as a need in the 2025 Needs Assessment. And then our final big bucket is substance use. Specific metrics are poisoning and drug overdose rates and youth substance use. I have the most recent California Healthy Kids Survey data. It hasn't been widely distributed yet because it's really new. The good news is mental health is improving for our youth. So an area to continue to work on is youth substance use. So these are areas of opportunity. But I want you to have in the back of your mind, we are doing really well in so many areas. As a community, we have such lower prevalence of obesity and diabetes and high blood pressure. And we are phenomenal at getting out and participating in physioactivity. Our loneliness rates are so low, we're well below national and state levels. But to walk away with these are really our largest needs of opportunity. And I would actually add tobacco use to substance as well. As I mentioned earlier, we've done some prioritization. But there's a little bit of a story behind each of these in what this person knew going into prioritizing. Key informants are part of our needs assessment. We asked the 61 who ended up participating to rank as a major problem, moderate problem, no problem at all, 16 different areas of healthcare. And you can see they ranked substance use as the leading major problem in our region, followed by social determinants. In their case, those two were grouped, housing and food insecurity, mental health, et cetera. So you can see that these are people who are experts in our community and were asked to rank those, not knowing any of the data yet. At the community forum, we spent 60 minutes going over as much data as we could in detail. Afterwards, we asked those attendees to rank based on severity and scope of the healthcare issue, but also feasibility. Can we actually do something about this? And when they were asked to do that, we could quantify this. Mental health came up as the top, followed by food insecurity. You can read those there. And the following day, we were at the Lions Club Free Health Fair. So you can see these are different populations. The community forum was open up to anybody. Anybody could come, but they were all given that 60-minute presentation. The free health fair are people accessing free health services. They had flu shots there for free. They had oral health screenings for free. They had glasses for vision, for example. They had blood pressure and glucose screening. So different population. We gave them three dots and asked them to put the dots on the area of need they think we, as a community, should be focusing. And for that population, housing came up as the top need, followed by access to care and oral health. So out of the 16, the actual top five are really similar, even if they're ranked a little bit differently within those top five. Next steps, this is my last slide. We take all of this information and we start to drill down a little bit more into it and really identify our strategies to addressing these needs. I am in the process of recruiting a Community Health Improvement Plan Task Force. Even tonight, I'm going to recruit someone from our Patient Family Advisory Committee. And then we're going to start meeting in December and then meet through May to ultimately develop an action plan or strategic plan that is finalized by June 30, 2026. We will also be aligning with Tahoe Forest Strategic Plan. And as a part of the Nevada County Community Health Assessment Steering Committee, as I am involved in Placer Counties, we will continue to collaborate with both counties on future needs assessments and align with DHCS criteria. I'm happy to answer any questions. I encourage you to go to the website and look at the data yourself.
Great. Thank you so much for the comprehensive report. It's fascinating what you guys are doing here, especially when we compare it to what's going on down in the Western County. So thank you. Before I go to my colleagues for questions, I'm going to see, we're going to open up public comment and see if there's any public comment on the report. Seeing any in the chambers, are there any callers?
Not seeing any, but let's give it one more second to check.
Okay, thank you.
No callers.
Okay, thank you so much. We will close the public hearing, public comments, and see if there's any comments from my colleagues. Ardi, I see you writing notes furiously there. So I'm sure you have a few questions, even though I know that you've been intimately involved in all of this.
Chronic note-taking. Thank you for the presentation. Yeah, I've seen that before. And I know you're going to tell me to move this closer to me, but it's actually glued. Oh, hey, it's unglued. Sorry. Anna and Lizzie, both thank you so much and welcome to our community, to your new leadership team. And you know, we welcome you and looking forward to working with you. I started understanding Tahoe Forest Hospital when I was in college. I worked as an EMT, so I went to the emergency room all the time. And I've seen this community growth over the past 30-some-odd years that we've lived here, had a couple of kids there, been hospitalized there several times. For, you know, it was a good experience and a bad experience, I'll put it that way. But lots of orthopedic visits. And I've just seen the hospital system grow and change to meet the community needs. And I'm really proud of what you do. It's also nice when you walk into ER or any of this specialty group for care. You know, I know people, you know, they're local people that live and work in our community. So it's nice to share that with the hospital system. I think your work with seniors, I'd like to applaud as well. There's, I've done some senior outreach tabling groups that Tahoe Forest has been a part of. And you've always been welcome to jump in there and work with that community. So I think it's a, it's kind of a silent population that deserves a little extra attention if we can get over there and handle it and be part of their community. So I appreciate that very much. And then, you know, with the county, we cross paths on all these care coordination. And when I first came into office, we talked a lot with our staff about where do we overlap and how do we best serve the population? Later on, we're going to talk a little bit about homelessness and some of the other populations that really connect to both the county and the hospital. And I think we've done, we've made great strides over the past 10 years or so, making sure that we have coordinated care between all the different groups and where those people best fit into our community and whether they're served by county services or hospital services or other. I'm proud of that as well. I was wondering if you could bring the slide up there? I just had one quick question. I think it was, it was the community priority areas? If we can.
I don't know if we have control of the slides anymore.
Okay, I'm looking at the wrong person.
No, we don't.
The health-related, I think back one, back one more, right here. Oops, forward one.
The health-related social needs.
Yeah, right there, perfect. So the health-related social needs, I'll just mention that some of the federal funding cuts that we're experiencing are directly related to the health-related social needs. So food insecurity, housing, transportation, health literacy, and caregiving. Those are things that the county is actively looking to support within our own service provision. And we are trying to work with our federal partners to make sure those are continually funded because SNAP, food insecurity, those are direct programs that are going to, that are going to impact your ability to meet that need. And I would say as well with the substance use disorder and youth substance use disorder. So just putting it out there that we kind of share that. And from a legislative priority position, we should probably talk more with your organization about how we can push in the same direction with our federal legislators and understand how to get that money here. That's it for me. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thanks. Any of, any of my other colleagues have comments or questions on this one?
Yeah, this was, this is very interesting. Thank you. I know. So when I look at access to healthcare, that was an interesting one. And having a primary care physician is huge. And that, that has to be an issue here in a smaller community, is it? And do your clinics actually help fill that gap? I mean, one of our things in our hospital, unfortunately, is a lot of people go to the emergency room for that kind of healthcare. So how are you guys managing that here when you're so spread out?
Yeah, this is a huge challenge for this, for this region. And I would just say two things. I mean, I did, that was one of the reasons why I put the slide up about the 50,000, you know, the expansion, which is a, it's a significant expansion. And I would put a caveat that that's going to be phased in and it is contingent, you know, and reliant on us being able to recruit. You know, there is a national shortage of primary care providers. One of the things I think we're really proud of at Tahoe Forest is that we not only have just a world-class physician group and team, but we also have advanced practice providers in our, in our system. And they are playing a huge role in ensuring people get the care they need. And that said, you know, we are absolutely being bowled over by the demand. So it is a, you know, a significant priority for us. And it is something that we're working on, but it is, it is challenging. And I would just say, you know, you come back to, I thought Lizzie was, she made a really good point around the food insecurity, the housing insecurity, and even just housing in general. I'm coming from the Bay Area. You know, it is, it is very difficult to get workforce into this region and housing, even, you know, with a disproportionately, you know, in the case of providers, you know, on the higher pay level, it is still a challenge to get people into this area, particularly when, you know, we want people kind of to come, bring your families, really embed in this community, much like Supervisor Bullock, you know, talking about, we want to see you in our, you know, hopefully not in our ER with an injury, but maybe in primary care for your well check. But it, it's difficult to, you know, is a challenging region. And I know that everyone is really committed and we've been working on that. There's lots of creative ideas, and I just want to give a nod to the town on that as well. But it's, 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 it's not something that we can just kind of open the jobs and people will come. We have to have a whole workforce strategy around that, and we are working on that. The other thing I just want to say, I'm sorry to, I did not, I neglected to say, I just want to thank Supervisor Bullock and the entire Nevada County team have been so welcoming to me. And Director Gruber and Phoebe Bell and everyone have been, you know, it's been really a joy to work with them. So I'm very happy to be here and happy that, that together we, together we will tackle these problems. But, but what we know is that the hospital really does have to work in a very coordinated way with the town and the county. So grateful for the chance to do that. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation. I am now going to ask for a motion to accept the report in a second.
I'd move to accept.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Great. Thank you so much. And before they all leave, they have asked if we would do a picture with them. I know all of our favorite things to do, so.
Can I make one quick announcement? Related to the hospital board and the town of Truckee Town Council will have a joint meeting held here tonight. And Chief Renfro has told me five times, it's 6:00 PM? 5:30, thank you. 5:30 PM. We are not messing that up. 5:30 here.
All right. Our next item is the Behavioral Health Director, Phoebe Bell. And we are looking at a resolution approving the contract between the County of Nevada and Crow's Nest Ranch Outpatient LLC. Phoebe?
All right. Good morning, Supervisors. And the timing of this item is so great, following on the heels of that great presentation from Anna and Lizzie in the hospital, which really highlighted the need for mental health and substance use services in the Tahoe Truckee region. So just about a year ago, we received notice that Granite Wellness Center, which had been serving the Truckee region as well as the North Tahoe region with offices and in-person services for many, many years, was closing due to a lot of challenges around hiring staff. And so over the past year, we've been working hard to fill the need in the Tahoe Truckee area. We contracted with an organization called Let's Recover, who provides primarily virtual services. And they've served a lot of Truckee folks with both outpatient substance use counseling as well as medication-assisted treatment. In addition, Tahoe Forest Hospital, as we just heard, offers really great access to substance use treatment as well. And many community members have been able to use that resource. But we still felt like we had a need for in-person SUD services, substance use services here in the Truckee region. And so we were super excited to make a connection with a newer organization called The Crow's Nest, which had been operating here in Truckee for a little bit and had gone through the really hard work of becoming Medi-Cal certified and able to engage in a contract for Medi-Cal reimbursed services. So we have here today Jordan and Brianna from The Crow's Nest. We're going to talk a little bit about what they do and how they came to be. And then in front of you, we will have a request to approve a contract with them. So that.
I swear organizations are more organized than that. Thank you all for having us. Appreciate it. I always make this joke every time I'm in any kind of important setting like this, or if you'd told me that I would be at a place like this in my youth, I probably would have told you, you need cut off. Howdy, well, good to see you, man. Lots of emails and phone calls. Yeah, so we came about pretty much when I got out of rehab. I saw that there was a big need. We started out predominantly as peer support, running group meetings that were alternative to the local 12-steps, just things that could offer people a little more than just your regular 12-step meetings. And from there, we just grew. The idea to open the outpatient came from a confidant of mine. And from there, we just started working our buns off to bring you some local in-person holistic treatment. So that's why we're here and how we came about. To really shorten things up, I can be really long-winded, so I'm going to cut myself off here as well. So thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Brianna Minor. I'm the co-founder here at Crow's Nest Ranch. So as Jordan mentioned, we are an outpatient facility. We're licensed with the Department of Healthcare Services, accredited with the Joint Commission, and now thankfully certified with Drug Medi-Cal Clinic as well. And looking forward to contracting with Nevada County. We offer services from partial hospitalization, which is up to 30 treatment hours a week for an individual, down to intensive outpatient services, which is up to minimum nine hours, up to 20 hours a week. And then outpatient services as well. And then we will also be adding to our continuum of care, further peer support services, prevention and wellness services, and soon-to-be crisis services as well. And that is all the services that we offer at Crow's Nest Ranch. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, you guys. And we're really excited to have this organization as a potential partner here in Truckee. I think they really have their fingers on the pulse of Truckee needs and are being well-received by the community. And we're hopeful that this will add to the array of services for residents in Truckee, particularly those folks on Medi-Cal when they need access to care. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. And thank you both for being here and sharing your story with us. We appreciate it. Any questions for Phoebe or? All right. At this time, I am going to open up the public comment. Does anybody from the audience would like to comment on this item? No? Okay. Any callers?
No callers.
All right. All right. Seeing no public comment, we'll close the.
No, so I just have a question. This is interesting. So this was like a little grassroots group that created this? And, and it's just here in Trekki? That's incredible. That's incredible. So, and how long have you been in existence?
Try and keep it short and sweet again.
That's really very interesting.
2022. 2022. We started out predominantly as just running some meditation and workout meetings and then started working from there to establishing a legitimate clinical offering to the area specific to substance use and behavioral health. We figured there's a lot of other great healthcare practitioners in the area. Tahoe Forest Health, quite obviously, very, very adept at what they do. But we wanted to just really focus in on that specific need and what was needed in the community and give people some real, like, in-person care. And so we just started from there and just started working, you know. We've been open as a clinic 18 months. Okay, that'll probably closer to 20 now. Added math, anyway, not important. It'll be two years in January. That's shorter. And so the point here is, is we, we just really saw the need to put our best foot forward first and build from the ground up. So we, you know, got to, got to work. It has not been without the help of people in our community whatsoever. Brianna and I, husband and wife and business partner. So you can imagine how fun our house is at times. But, you know, the goal was, was to become licensed, accredited, and get in tune with Medi-Cal. The big reason I wanted to be involved with Medi-Cal specifically is in my past, I've gotten treatment through health state insurance. So just mincing my words there, apologies. But it's been a goal of mine ever since to really offer real legitimate, just focusing on that substance use and behavioral health care and recovery for all people of our community, not just our specific section. We definitely could have gone the private route as far as just only taking so many different things. But that was not my intention with this and never will be.
Thank you for that.
Artie?
Yeah, yeah, just a comment.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I've seen the progression of your organization. I think we were, you know, just in your infant and genesis period, right when you started, you and I talked and talked a lot. Yeah, very supportive. And I just want to commend you for your fortitude in getting through that Medi-Cal application. I think, I'd like to also thank Phoebe and Ryan for, because I think early on I said, hey, I don't know what we can do because we serve this certain population. We can help you become a service provider. And you've done that and our staff has worked with you to do that. And I'm really proud of both our team and your team for making that partnership to get it, get it going and serve it. I think this area of topic of treatment in Trekki is really near and dear to my heart. And I've done a lot of work with teen mental youth, teen mental wellness and youth stuff. And like, until you've been with some family member or somebody you love that has a problem, you, you have all these problems in your life until somebody you love is sick and then you only have one problem. That's the only problem you have at that point. And so you step in at that really critical juncture in somebody's trajectory that you can really make a difference. So I'm here to support you 100%. I'll do anything I can to push you guys forward and allow you to serve the community as best you possibly can. And I think the rest of the board probably shares that too. And so just thank you so much for your hard work.
Thank you too.
Thank you. Well, I agree. I think that, you know, seeing somebody, seeing community members who see a need and stepping up and creating, creating solutions for that need is really important. Government can't do it all. So really grateful for our partnerships with organizations like yours. So if there's no other comments, I would entertain a motion for approval for the contract with The Crow's Nest.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Roll call?
District 5.
Yes.
District 2.
Yes.
District 4.
Yes.
District 3.
Yes.
District 1 is absent.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. All right. Our next item is general public comment.
Can we get a photo too?
All right. Moving right along. Our next item is general public comment. Members of the public shall be allowed to address the board of supervisors on items that are not appearing on our agenda today. Speakers are encouraged, but not required to give their name and district of residence. And please direct your comments to us here at the board. Each speaker will be given three minutes, at which point the microphone will be turned off, although I'm not sure we have the ability here. So, but please keep it to three minutes. And then you may provide comments by speaking directly to the board from inside the Trekki chambers or by calling 270-3474 to comment live over the phone. If you want to make a comment on the phone, please get on the phone right now. All right. Anybody for public comment? So this is your opportunity for things that are not on the agenda today.
For the record, I'm Gordon Gossage of Regenesis Planet. And yesterday, you received an email from me describing using deliberative democracy to help us meet the challenge of our housing crisis. And I look forward to reviewing this approach with each of you. I believe strongly we must bring emotions into our housing solutions. Deliberative democracy asks neighbors who rarely speak to sit together and wrestle with issues they see very differently. Policy ideas do matter. Yet at Regenesis Planet, we believe the most important part is this, seeing each other's faces and feeling what the other feels. Think of the places you've called home. Were there times when home added stress instead of relief? When a household spends less than 30% of their gross income on housing, the costs feel manageable. Above 30%, most people feel burdened. Above 50%, the burden can feel extreme. Now picture neighbors in conversation. One household spends under 30%. The other household, an early 30s couple with an eight-year-old, has watched their housing costs climb from 30 to 50% in three years. Over that time, they've had to cut non-housing expenses from 70% of income to 50% of income. How do they express the emotions they deeply feel? Common emotions in that shift. Stress and anxiety, the constant mental math, fear that one surprise bill breaks the month. Loss and grief, saying no to dinner is out. Hobbies, travel, or kids' activities. Pieces of identity left behind. Shame or embarrassment. Comparisons to peers or to a past life. Worry about falling behind. Irritability and resentment. Money fights at home, frustration toward landlords, lenders, or the system. Guilt. Trimming gifts, donations, or kids' extras, saying no more often. Isolation and FOMO. Every purchase becomes a micro trade-off. Budgeting burnout. Exhaustion. Extra work hours or side gigs to plug gaps. Insecurity, fear of car trouble, medical surprises, rent or tax hikes. This emotional reality must be the backdrop for the choices we make as a community to provide each other with housing solutions. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else that wishes to make comments on items that are not on the agenda this morning? Any callers?
No callers.
All right. We will close general public comment. Move on to our next item, which we will be recessing as the Board of Supervisors and reconvening as the Nevada County Sanitation District. The first item on that agenda is our consent. These items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. And the Board of Directors will be able to act upon them at one time without discussion. Any board member may request that an item be removed. Any member of the public can ask for an item to be removed. Are there any comments or items to be removed on the consent for this? Would ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar for the Nevada County Sanitation District?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Roll call?
District 5.
Yes.
District 2.
Yes.
District 4.
Yes.
District 3.
Yes.
District 1 is absent.
Okay. So no items pulled from the consent calendar. So now we will have an opportunity to make general public comment on the sanitation district. Is there any general public comment? Callers?
No callers.
All right. Seeing none, we will close the public comment and adjourn as the Nevada County Sanitation District number one. All right. We are going to now take a five-minute break because we have an item that is timed for 11:35. So. All right. Thanks. Anybody, please take their seat so we can start our meeting? All right. Thank you so much. Our next item is going to be an informational presentation regarding the efforts to address homelessness and the Tahoe-Trekki Homeless Action Coalition funding recommendations for a homeless resource center in Trekki. Ryan Gruber, welcome.
Thank you, Supervisor Swarthout, members of the board. I'm Ryan Gruber, Health and Human Services Director for Nevada County. And I stand before you today as part of a coalition presenting progress on homelessness in the Tahoe-Trekki region. So I want to make that distinction versus the county coming forward with a project that we have a network of coalition partners in the audience today who have been part of this process. And I'll be more specific in terms of what that has entailed. But we have representatives from the faith-based community, from North Tahoe Truckee Homeless Services, from Tahoe Forest Hospital, the town of Trekki, Placer County has been a participant, and many more. And it's so exciting to bring you an update today. So this really represents an update on the work of the Tahoe-Trekki Homeless Action Committee. That's a slight rebranding from where it started as the Tahoe-Trekki Homeless Advisory Committee, as we've pivoted from developing a plan towards implementation of that plan. And its goals are to prevent and reduce homelessness in the Tahoe-Trekki region. And we've been working on homelessness in this area for, for many years. But there have been some real barriers to establishing services in the area. That's not to say we don't do anything. We've had contracts for homeless outreach and services. There's previously been a warming shelter and a day center. But getting enduring locations and enduring projects in place has been a challenge. And that's part of why the Tahoe, the T-HAC, as we call it, the Tahoe-Trekki Homeless Action Committee was formulated, recognizing that need for broader-based community stakeholder input from participation from our jurisdictional partners and other interested parties. So the coalition is chaired by So the coalition is chaired by Mayor Jan Zabriski, who's in the audience today, Supervisor Hardy Bullock, and Cindy Basso, who is the founder of the Fellowship for Compassion. And then you can see the members, the other members of the coalition up on the screen there. So we've got North Tahoe Truckee Homeless Services, who I mentioned, Placer County, Sierra Community House, Tahoe Forest Health System, the Community Foundation, Town of Truckee, the Chamber of Commerce, Truckee Library, and United for Action. So a really broad coalition of interested stakeholders helping to move forward solutions for the community. So the first phase of that project involved creating a regional homeless action plan, so recognizing that there are unique challenges in Truckee as part of Nevada County and that Truckee is part of the Tahoe Truckee region and that jurisdictional boundary between Nevada County and Placer County isn't as relevant up here as it is in some other places. People really are part of a region, and somebody, especially somebody who's unsheltered, could be spending their evening on either side of that border in the recognition of a need for a regional approach. Also focusing on gaps that exist. So we worked with, part with a state grant, a technical assistance grant, to analyze data and compile a list in terms of the need and the gaps in the system. And so those gaps exist along a spectrum from navigation to permanent supportive housing to affordable housing. And permanent supportive housing, the board will recall that we attempted to bring a permanent supportive housing project to bear that did not move forward. There is permanent supportive housing on the horizon with Pacific Crest Commons, which you'll be hearing more about later today, as well as more affordable housing as part of that project. So you'll be hearing a presentation from Tyler Barrington as well as getting a tour of that under construction project. So those two components, in addition to permanent supportive housing having been developed on the Placer side with Brown Bear Studios and numerous affordable housing projects in the region, that navigation and interim housing ended up being a clear gap and the need for shelter beds. And so this is something that all the coalition partners united around in terms of the spectrum of need and a focus area for that, for the most immediate need. So some of the, some timeline here in terms of partner acceptance of this regional plan, which really was an outgrowth of both Placer and Nevada County's broader homelessness plans, but specific to this region. The Town of Truckee Council approved it in April of 2025. Sorry, the dates here are sequential. Homeless Resource Council of the Sierras, which was, is the umbrella entity for homelessness or for the T-HAC group, approved it in February. Tahoe Forest Hospital approved it in May, and the Board of Supervisors heard and approved it in May, and it's being incorporated by reference into the Nevada County Broader Homeless Action Plan. So we're excited today that, following the lead of our partners in the coalition, we've been working towards, as a group, a navigation center. And there is a property that has been identified. And the coalition partners expressed a strong desire to get something in place by the winter and, if possible, to have the capacity for winter shelter in addition to interim housing beds, which are typically, typically part of navigation. And so the property that you see up on your screen here has been identified as a potential location. We have a cost estimate, and we have a potential provider in terms of, in Volunteers of America. And so you see some basics about early development of what this might look like. I will say one thing, as we've followed this community and coalition approach is that we've traded the county's traditional approach to bringing homeless resources to bear, which is where we look for opportunities in terms of location that align with grants and strike when those two things align and try to bring something forward that aligns with those things. Something we've had to trade here is the recognition that we, if we're taking our time, if we're looking for the things that are truly a priority of the community, we don't necessarily align that with grant opportunities. And so the need for a multiple partner approach to bringing things forward and funding it is something that we've leaned into in Tahoe Truckee. So this is the proposal that aligns with that. So it will have case management and services onsite, six interim beds, and then capacity for 10 congregate beds for the four winter months of the year. And it'll be 25 or 24/7, 365 days a year for the six interim beds. And this is a one-year pilot project. So all partners agreeing to bring forward to their governing boards for consideration, participating in this as a pilot. So the Town of Truckee and Tahoe Forest Hospital District are having a joint board meeting this evening. They're here today and will be present for that meeting this evening to consider participating in this. Their members have been actively participating in the coalition and helping drive this forward. The board has previously authorized in closed session for us to begin or to consider lease negotiations on the Deerfield property. So contingent on your board's approval or acceptance of this presentation and the adoption by the hospital and the town this evening, we will move forward with that. The, I want to update this third bullet a little bit. It references the town's development code. The development code actually reflects the government code provisions that exist external to the development code. We're not leveraging the development code, but the government code privileges related to inter-jurisdictional rights to supersede zoning. And that is something that we're, we're asking the board to consider by invitation of the coalition and by the urging and recommendation of the coalition. Want to be clear that that's something that we do not leverage against the will of a jurisdiction and something that we're doing as part of this coalition because it's necessary to move quickly and get something in place. But then there will be further negotiations as we head into contracts for leasing, for operations, and for the revenue sharing agreement associated with this pilot project. So there's, we've worked very closely with partners, learning the lessons from our previous experiences around Hope Ridge House and working with the town in particular in terms of outreach strategy. There have been various touchpoints for community engagement that continue. The coalition meetings have been public and some of them participatory with community members. We've done and continue to do radio spots, neighborhood outreach meetings. There was one last night, presentation with Good Morning Truckee and leaning into communication channels for the region. So a high level of outreach in the lead up to this, this project and this consideration. And, and that's where we stand. And so open to any questions. And then we have coalition members who can also make comment if needed.
Great, thank you so much, Ryan, for the presentation. Before we open the public comment, do my colleagues have any questions for Ryan or for anybody from the group? Go ahead.
Hey, Ryan, talking about the superior jurisdictional provisions that will allow the shelter to move rapidly through the town planning process and through our use of that superior jurisdiction. Can you just describe for the board what actions have been taken to ratify that from our partners in the town?
Yeah, so the, I believe additionally, for consideration of the town this evening is waiving the 60-day notice requirement that is involved in using those government code provisions. I should also point out that there is a pending rezone before the Planning Commission that was in process prior to this location being identified, which will change the zoning in a way that would be, that would make this project compliant. So really, that superseding of jurisdiction is just getting a jump on what's already coming or what's already being considered by the Truckee Planning Commission. So for, in order for us to use this as part of this group, it requires the town to approve waiver of that 60 days. Otherwise, it would be a longer timeline.
So we have the support of the town?
That's my understanding. I believe that's before them for consideration this evening as well, though formally.
Yeah, and kind of rhetorical question, but I think from the process and the staff report and the meetings that it is, you know, is part of the recommendation that's being processed. So I just wanted everybody to understand that when you talked about not using that jurisdiction against the will of another authority, that means something, and that we're looking for our partner's support in that action, in that action.
And it was the formal recommendation of T-HAC through a public vote for, to ask the county to use that authority.
Yes, yeah, thanks for the clarification.
All right, seeing no more questions from my colleagues, we will open it up for public comment at this time. If you'd like to come to the podium and comment on this item, feel free. Three minutes, and if you could give us your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Julie Arsenal. I live in Truckee in the Coldstream neighborhood. I will be the next-door neighbor to this building. It is within 100 feet of my house where I live full-time. I want to be clear, there's three components here. There's the model, there's the location, and there's the process. I do support the model for this shelter, the low-barrier model, having integrated services, having it always be open and staffed full-time. Volunteers of America seems great, very supportive. Location, I have reservations about the location. It is not big enough to be the best long-term solution for what Truckee needs for a permanent emergency shelter and navigation center. It is too far from service providers. They will need to travel to the site to deliver primary care, nursing care, mental health services. It is also too close to a residential neighborhood, which is going to add complexity and cost for this location. Process, this is where I have the biggest concerns. So I do not support the use of 1802-025 to invoke the county's superpowers to supersede the Truckee Planning and Development Codes. This, because of this shelter's proximity to residential neighborhood, I think it is essential that it be subject to the Truckee Planning Code and process, which is actually, as you mentioned, already in flight. The zoning changes are already in flight to make something like this easier. There's no need to accelerate it. I do not feel like my concerns as a nearby neighbor have really been effectively considered and integrated into this process. So I first heard about this approximately a week and a half ago. Last Monday, I learned about this meeting and the one tomorrow, or sorry, the one tonight. And then I also, we, members of our neighborhood submitted public comment to the Town of Truckee. And then within a few hours of that, we learned that the neighborhood meeting last night was scheduled. A number of us were able to attend the neighborhood meeting last night. That was great, there are still some big questions that are unanswered. And I think that the hasty process here is contributing to these questions being unanswered in a adequate timeline. So I would like to see the opening funding and long-term approval of this, like, long-term continuation of this pilot contingent on a few things. A good neighbor policy that is developed in conjunction with members of our neighborhood as, again, literally the neighbor, next-door neighbor to the shelter. I want to see clear success criteria that includes measurable impacts for neighborhood, measurable consideration, or sorry, measurable metrics around neighborhood impacts. And I want to see a clear, defined, community accountability meetings and process. There are a few things that I'm particularly concerned about. Our neighborhood already experiences impacts from unhoused people, and I'm worried that these will be exacerbated without proper management plans in place. And if you have data that suggests I shouldn't be worried about these things, I'm happy to look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. So just one second. So we, I have no way of monitoring the clock up here.
So the clock is right here. Your clerk is monitoring it. When three minutes is up, you will hear a buzzer.
Okay.
And then that means that they'll wrap it up.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. My name is Jessica Hemmend. I'm the President and CEO of the Truckee Chamber of Commerce and a member of T-HAC. We've been an active member in this 18-month process and strongly support funding the navigation pilot for one year. We believe this project represents a meaningful step forward in addressing the homelessness in our region with both humanity and accountability. Truckee's business, business community understands that a healthy, thriving economy depends on a safe and stable community for everyone. And we commend Nevada County, the Town of Truckee, Tahoe Forest, and all T-HAC partners for the shared leadership on this issue. We also encourage continued neighborhood conversations on this project. As this project advances, ensuring residents, businesses, and service providers have ongoing opportunities to engage, share feedback, and help alleviate concerns. Open communication will be essential to building understanding and long-term community support. Thank you to your commitment to collaborative solutions to this really difficult problem.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair and members of the board. My name is Mary Brolio. And first of all, I'd like to thank Supervisor Bullock and members of T-HAC for their community meeting yesterday. I felt like it was really productive. I'm here today to support the proposed one-year navigation center pilot and to commend the county, town, hospital district, and homeless action coalition for selecting a more appropriate location and allocating funds to move this project forward. In the past, I had concerns about the previously proposed site, which I felt was not well-suited to meet the needs of supportive housing residents or the surrounding community. I appreciate that the county listened to community feedback and took the time to evaluate alternatives. The current location represents a more thoughtful balance, one that provides accessibility to services and safety for those in need while also being mindful of neighborhood impacts. Homelessness is a pressing issue in Truckee, and this project is an important step forward in addressing it in a compassionate and effective way. Investing funds in this navigation center demonstrates a commitment to both human dignity and responsible community planning. By offering safe housing and supportive services, we create pathways towards stability and reduce the strain on other public resources. Thank you for your leadership and for taking community concerns into account while still prioritizing action. I urge you to continue advancing this project so that Truckee can provide meaningful, lasting solutions for our unhoused residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Reverend Claire Novak, a T-HAC member representing United for Action and North Tahoe Truckee Coalition of Faith-Based Organizations and Community Activists. UFA's focus is on meeting our neighbors' basic needs, shelter, clothing, food, health. And our key focus for over the last 10 years has been on homelessness and housing. And I'm here to remind you of the depth of community backing for our unhoused neighbors. 10 years ago, to this day, I was in the basement of Church of the Mountains in Truckee at a neighbor meeting to discuss a proposed pilot program for an emergency warming center. And this was a grassroots program by UFA, the church, and a coalition of faith groups and agencies and nonprofits, a grassroots effort that was built on hope and best practices. We listened to housed and unhoused neighbors, researched best practices, and we adapted them to our unique mountain region. We collaborated, we raised money, we volunteered so that we could end deaths from weather exposure and neglect. And here we are again, 10 years later, for another collaborative pilot, a navigation center. We're still here with the same hope and humanity, but with greater experience and tools and allies. And I want to lift up the strong work of the T-HAC. Two dozen members of our community came together to give vision and direction for a regional homeless action plan. And this plan is local wisdom by locals, suited to Tahoe Truckee realities and resources for our mountain values and weather. So let's start to carry forward this sound action plan. We know from the success of North Tahoe Truckee Homeless Services that grew out of our grassroots efforts that we have concerned, committed community members who will use their know-how, their dollars, and their efforts to make this navigation center succeed. They'll approve of the funding that you contribute, and they'll add more. And I'll be there with the over 100 UFA members who backed our letter of support to bring in more allies so that we can make the navigation a space for those who are still out in the cold and yet still part of us. And I'll say this, I've been to so many neighbor meetings and local forums on homelessness over this past 10 years. I'm grateful for that. And never once did I hear that we don't care about our unhoused neighbors. Never once did I hear that they don't or they shouldn't exist among us. The questions have always been about the how. How can we make an effective difference?
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
My name is Cheryl. I'm a local service provider. And over doing my job for about eight years now, I've seen a significant increase in homelessness, housing needs. I've watched some of our local longtime seasonal workers or working poor who are living in their vehicles, are living in tents. And so I strongly support funding this navigation center pilot. I think that this is a best-case scenario with the support that it comes with. And these aren't others, these are our community members. These are our working poor, these are our families, these are our 20-year-olds, these are our 80-year-olds who need this. And we can act now. This problem is not going away. This is an issue that is here now, and I believe strongly that this can be resolved. But we have to act now. I believe that this model fosters stability, self-worth, dignity, health, and human. I believe that this model fosters stability, self-worth, dignity, health, and human connection. So thank you for voting yes.
Board, Travis Sanford, Volunteers of America, Northern California, Northern Nevada. Thank you for addressing this issue today. If this is approved and if VOA were selected as the operator, I want to reassure you that we would stand beside you, work collaboratively. We do not come into communities with a one-size-fits-all approach. We listen. I've really appreciated talking to the T.HAC folks and others in the community, and we're committed to continuing that through any challenges that may emerge. We have deep experience in homeless services, case management. We operate the Nevada Cares Campus down in Reno. We operate a number of navigation centers, including in Placerville and Sacramento. To put this in perspective, and I use these statistics very, very often, but a National Bureau of Economic Research paper found that if you are unhoused, you have a three-and-a-half times higher likelihood of dying. It takes 20 years off your life. And other studies have found that at a minimum, the impacts on ERs and hospitals, you are eight to nine times more likely to end up in the emergency room. And so I share that scope, and I always try to keep that in perspective. These are life and death issues. We take that super seriously, and we appreciate you jumping into this and addressing that in your community. We have had great success in various communities. And while there is no silver bullet, we have a pilot program right now down the hill in partnership with Anthem. And by pairing shelter, housing, case management, we have seen 90% reductions in emergency room visits, 90% reduction in hospitalization for the individuals participating in that program. The care coordination is vital, and that doesn't even begin to capture the human impact. And so I would also encourage you to think, and I always try to remind people, because I gravitate towards the numbers. That's just my personality. But there are real humans behind these statistics, and I get to see that. And so if you ever want to hear those, or if you ever need that connection to the front lines, reach out to us or to any of the other frontline providers. I could give you time and time again the most miraculous stories of people being resilient and working through that journey. And so our goal is to help people work from homelessness to independence and show them love and dignity along the way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I'm grateful to be here today. This is a huge step forward with the work that everyone's put together. My name's Kathy Foley, and today I'm here as a community advocate and a board member for Fellowship of Compassion. I've lived in this community for 33 years, and for the last 15, I've volunteered and worked to provide care and connection for our unhoused and underhoused neighbors, most recently serving nine years as the leader of the Emergency Warming Center in North Tahoe Truckee Homeless Services. During those years, I've shared countless meals, discussions, nights, holidays with our unhoused neighbors. I've learned firsthand that the majority of our guest visits are from people who live here or have deep connections to this region. I've witnessed over and over the transformation that happens when people are given access to basics that we all need: a place to sleep, a warm meal, a bathroom, a shower, a locker to keep their belongings, a place to do laundry, and often, most important, is a space where they belong. When provided this space as a basic level, these humans don't die outside in our community. They don't spend as much time in the emergency room, and they reduce their interactions with law enforcement. On a deeper level, they rediscover hope, dignity, the belief that change is possible, and that their lives are valuable. Homelessness is a complex challenge that no single agency can solve. It takes a collaboration, which has happened the last two years. I urge you to fund the one-year navigation center pilot as it's the first tangible step towards consistent, professional, year-round solutions, and one that's supported by the town, the hospital, the broader community, and the county. Through Fellowship of Compassion, I'm helping lead the community fundraising efforts. We've already submitted a grant request to a local foundation for $70,000. We've received pledges of $30,000 from our members. And just yesterday, we received a $3,000 donation from a family who receives the Truckee-Tahoe Homeless Action Coalition emails, and it's a mother and her children who just want to make a difference and help their neighbors this winter. These initial community contributions show how much this community cares and wants to see the efforts of these last nine years of work transformed into something predictable, sustainable, and supportive to our vulnerable community members. And when the residents and longtime foundation and community supporters see our public institutions, the county, the town, and the hospital making this a priority, I believe they will all follow. Tonight, I respectfully urge you to vote yes and commit $360,000 towards this navigation center pilot. Your support will demonstrate to our region and the private donors alike that sustainable, right-sized solutions are not only possible, they're a priority.
Thank you for your comments.
We also have one caller, Chair.
Yeah, let's, let me, I'm going to take the caller. Can you just give us a minute? Go ahead, Claire.
Hi, this is Matthew Coulter calling from Grass Valley. And our navigation center, I guess it's been renamed, to Resource Center. And just so Truckee is aware, they should really come visit North Sutton Way in Grass Valley and see what's happened to that part of town. There's a lot of people that can't use that part of town anymore, can't go to CPS. I hear an echo, so I'm being played twice, I guess.
We can hear you just fine, Matt. Go ahead.
It's really impacted the area in a very, very negative way. And I would really encourage the county of Nevada to get Nevada County Sheriff's involved because it's, Grass Valley Police are way overwhelmed. They can't deal with it, and the fires, the deaths, the everything that's happening right around that area has made the retailers just pull away. We're losing business after business, and it just doesn't seem to be fair to anyone involved, including the people that are trying to be served, because that area now has become an open-air drug market. You can drive in, buy any drug you want, connect, and move along. And then someone's passed out on the sidewalk a block away, as this morning. Right now, there's three different police actions going on over there right now, three completely separate issues right now on North Sutton Way. I love the, all the different folks getting together up in Truckee. You guys are very organized and motivated and compassionate. It started that way down here, and then it became a moneymaking project for the homeless industrial complex. And this is what makes money, by just bringing more and more people in. Because the people that are here, we're not talking about our locals. We're talking about people with warrants from all over the US that have come here to participate in our drug culture, in drug-seeking culture. It's very unfortunate that one call is probably about 70 grand with all the three police agencies, fire agencies, helicopters, extracting dead bodies from camps. One call the other night, started at 1:00 in the morning, didn't finish till after 4:00 AM, just extracting one dead body. So these things that we're trying to help people with, we really need organized legal camping so these people don't have to be in the woods and take such a huge expense to go pick up their bodies when they die from drug overdoses, which is just really what seems to be the theme of what's going on locally here. Thank you very much. Be careful.
Thank you.
Just off the cuff, but I appreciate that you're here. I appreciate what you're doing. I have been working with the homeless services with Kathy Foley. She approached me, I guess it was eight or nine years ago, and she said, "Ruthie, I need help. You know, you want to come feed people breakfast?" And I thought, "Sure." You know, I said right away, "Sure." And then, you know, reality hit, and I went, "Oh, my gosh, I have to go in, you know, with all these people sleeping and wake them up and feed them breakfast." And I have to say, I have done a lot with the community. I've lived here since 1972. I've worked in the school district. I've been in Rotary. I have done so many things, you know, for our community. And I'd say working with the homeless is one of the best things I have ever done and the most gratifying. And when I first moved here, we had two homeless people, and they gave them rooms in the Alpine Riverside Hotel. And now, of course, I think we have like 40 in the whole area. So I would just really like to encourage you to help people that really need help and that deeply appreciate anything you do for them. And thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good morning, and thanks for hearing public comments. I really appreciate it. My name is Martina Caldui. I'm also homeowner in Coldstream. I am not prepared, and I don't feel prepared because everything came so sudden. As Julie already stated, we didn't have, you know, sufficient information, you know, to attend meetings. I was out of town, and I'm not in support of the county using Section 18020.25 for the following reasons. The building is for sale. It's a navigation center that's short-term. We talk about dignity. We're talking about everything. But if you close your eyes for a moment and imagine yourself being in a location, and now, maybe nine months, you know, after nine months, you have to move again. How do you feel about that, right? So I think it's not good for somebody who may need mental support to be moving around from location to location. I think there's dignity in having a permanent place and not moving people from one location to another location. This is not a long-term solution. It's short-term, and therefore, I think that ROI, return of investment, can be used better. If I think about 1.4 million, how much is going to be done for construction and everything? And then, you know, having to take that and move it someplace else, I think, I have concerns for the homeless people because I think they should have a permanent location that gives them permanent access and an environment where they can move from a shelter into a permanent location. And I think the pioneer location would be maybe a better location to expand and provide that short-term housing that is really needed for people in the long term. So again, you know, just imagine yourself having to move after nine months, or I don't know how long it will take to get the center up, but that is really my biggest concern, that we want to treat them with dignity, but is it dignity to be moved around after nine months again if the center is, if the building is on sale? Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you for your comments.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the board. My name is Allison Schwedner, and today I am here representing Placer County Health and Human Services as the Eastern County Liaison. And I am just here to share briefly with you that Placer County is also considering a funding request. The funding request was just received last week and is outside the fiscal year development cycle. But staff and policymakers are currently reviewing the funding request and circulating it and evaluating it. And that certainly takes a little bit of time, but they are also working to move as quickly as possible. And then I also just want to share that Placer recognizes the uniqueness of this request and that really working to end homelessness is a regional challenge requiring regional solutions. And we know that in the Tahoe Truckee area, many of our folks work in Placer County and live in Nevada County or vice versa, and our county lines are very fluid, and our neighbors experiencing homelessness also experience that fluidity. And I also want to share that we are thrilled to announce that we are about to celebrate the one-year opening of Brown Bear Studios. And so due to the hard work of many folks in this room and the collaborative efforts of many people, Placer County was able to convert 14 units, 14 old motel units at Seven Pines Motel in Kings Beach into 14 units of supportive housing. And it is solutions like that that really work to support our entire region around homelessness. And so, again, thank you for taking the time today. And I also wanted to say thank you to T.HAC, which Placer County is also a part of, for its leadership in really quickly developing a solution that can benefit our entire region. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Jan Zabriski, Mayor of County Truckee and a member of the, first, the T.HAC Committee and then the T.HAC Coalition. Thank you very much, Chair Swarthout, and to your fellow directors, thank you for hosting this item. This item has been unanimously supported by T.HAC. The recommendations have come through unanimously. The town staff has been the entity voting rather than I, even though I'm on the committee. I'm also on the town council. And the waiver of the notice provisions relating to the government code and the other items will come before me and my fellow council members this evening. And as you are hearing today, this evening, I will be hearing from, I expect, people both supporting and opposing the recommendations for the navigation center being located at Deerfield, as well as the funding and possible other items. We need to listen to people like Julie Arseneau, who not only said she opposes the location, but she added there's certain mitigation activities she wants to happen. Those are things we need to pay attention to, and that's what I expect the council will be doing tonight. Finally, oh, I also want to mention, Ryan got everything right, except just there was one small item. Not only will the interim housing be year-round, but also the shelter beds and the daytime services. So if this goes through, this is a fairly comprehensive project, even though it's only a pilot scaled-down version of what was recommended through the housing, the homeless action report. Finally, and most importantly, I want to thank all of the county staff, Ryan Grover, Phoebe Bell, and Jasmine, for putting in the extra time and extra effort that T.HAC demanded of them, as well as the town staff. Both our town manager and police chief have gone well beyond their normal duties and put in extra time and effort to bring us to this time, to this date and time, and through these achievements. So I'm very much appreciative. They deserve recognition. When you hand out your annual bonuses, be sure to think of them, all right? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Tough to follow. Supervisors Ted Owens, Tahoe Forest Health System, and also an active participant in the T.HAC experience. And I say that as an experience because it's been a long journey. And for the folks that may not be aware, T.HAC did a lot of exploratory investigation. T.HAC went down to South Lake Tahoe to see their experience and the things that they've incorporated in addressing the unhoused issues. We brought some of that back here. We examined, this isn't the first piece of property that we have examined. There have been multiple properties that have been examined, and they've all been faced with zoning issues or proximity to school issues and things of that nature. So it has been a very long road to actually have an opportunity on a property that will work. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank some people. The mayor did that, so I'm going to use my time wisely. But I would like to call out Kathy Foley in particular. You're very eloquent in the way you have described this issue. Your heart and compassion for the unhoused is unsurpassed in this community, and your proof of concept with the warming shelter through the years speaks volumes. And Kathy really is to be highly regarded for that work. And she has stuck with this all the way through this very long journey. One of the things I think that's very important in representing the hospital is to share with you a little bit of the challenges that the unhoused are faced when there are no services in our environment, which is very different than your environment down the hill. It gets very cold. It gets very snowy. And when there are no alternatives for law enforcement, our hospital is the alternative. Now, sometimes folks are not in need of care, but very often, they are. Now, sometimes folks are not in need of care, but very often they are. The warming shelter provided a place for them so they could avoid frostbite, hypothermia, the need to be admitted into the emergency department. Our goal in this has been really to provide a safe place for them where they don't become injured, they don't become patients. And, and of course, we will always take care of them, but we do not need to have folks unnecessarily present. I would like also to thank Chief Renfro for all of his help. We have worked very closely together in how we try to contend with helping the unhoused when there's really no alternatives for us. I want to thank Hardy Bullock. This is a very big lift for the county. I know that. I thank you all for your consideration. I urge your support in this, but I want to thank you for all showing up and being here in Eastern Nevada County. I know what that means.
So Ted, I knew you couldn't do, I knew you couldn't do it under three minutes, so.
I tried.
You did. You did good. Thank you.
Nevada County Board of Supervisors, I'm JD. You've seen me a number of times. I'm here to give my support for the proposed one-year navigation center pilot and thank the county, town, hospital district and Homeless Action Coalition for listening to the concerns of the community with previous projects. I recommended this location on Deerfield Drive to the county in March of this year and I'm pleased to see that the county is moving forward. This building meets the immediate needs of the community and has room for scalable growth for the future. It also allows for privacy for the people who utilize these services. I appreciate the steps T-HAC has taken to listen to the concerns of the community at large and their efforts to move the navigation center project along in preparation for the coming winter. It is my sincere hope that the project will be successful and continue for years to come. And since our meeting yesterday, I want to bring up a couple of things. I've been your guy on the radio, on the fire line since '07, since the Angora Fire. And recently, we've had multiple fires. We can't get the evidence because when the helicopters come in and the jets come in and they drop 3,500 gallons of water on the origin of these fires and they drop everything, all the evidence is gone. But a lot of it points to people making warming fires in the forest. I've seen it. I've been on site as they're sighting these folks and then they're going back to camp and they continue to make another fire. I believe that this could be helpful because that was a very, very scary situation last August as jets flew down Donner Pass Road to put out a major wildfire in the Town of Truckee. Secondly, since our meeting yesterday in Coldstream and the residents, I know exactly where you stand Julie and all you folks, and I don't know if you really had the amount of information and the time given. It was only by a miracle that the community stood up and it was removed from the single-family residential neighborhood as they were putting it next to an attorney's house who was your public defender, who stood up and fought hard. And unfortunately Julie doesn't have that today. So with 30 seconds left, I know you were talking about bonuses. We've also looked at what the financial impacts are going to be towards these homeowners. And instead of giving those bonuses to our government officials and county workers, I'd like you to think about giving the bonuses to the impacts and the loss of what they might lose financially of their home values, their way of life and give these people back this money to them because if it ends up there. And lastly, your behavior on the internet will last forever. Kathy Foley, I don't know what you did in the past, but I know what you said on the internet. It's there forever. Don't forget when you post it.
Thank you for your comments.
My name's Dan Wilkins. I'm in front of you as the acting town manager for the Town of Truckee. Jen Callaway is out of town today and asked me to make some comments on behalf of the town. First and foremost, we sincerely appreciate the county's collaborative involvement with the T-HAC process, which involved, as we've heard multiple times, you know, the town, the hospital district, other government entities and nonprofits in the region. And we believe that, you know, that collaborative process that you all have engaged in and helped lead through the T-HAC effort has brought us to a, a place that where we're poised for success. As Mayor Zabriski mentioned earlier, the town council and the hospital district are meeting in a joint session this afternoon at 5:30 where the council will be considering nine items that the staff is recommending to them, all of which would move this project along and the town's, the town's role in that project would be approved through that if the council goes along with the staff recommendations. That remains to be seen. We need the full council to take action on that. And then the hospital district, their board is also considering the $360,000 contribution to make this a reality this evening. I think the fact, or to hopefully make that happen, I think the fact that this is a one-year pilot project has a lot of merit in providing an opportunity to kick the tires on this type of an effort and without a huge long-term commitment in terms of the physical location or it, it provides a lot of opportunity to fine-tune this, this effort as it goes forward to make sure it meets the needs of the communities we're trying to serve as well as meeting the needs of the adjacent neighborhoods. So we thank you for considering this item.
Thanks, Dan.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Shawna Doherty and I stand before you today as the coordinator for Tahoe Truckee Homeless Action Coalition. I'm here today and I've been up at this podium for various reasons, also on town staff, always in the arena of housing. Homelessness is a housing issue at the end of the day and it's an honor for me to be working in the, serving people who are in the housing bridge at the lowest level or even trying to get into the housing bridge. I also want to extend a thank you to all of the T-HAC members and also to Nevada County staff. In watching, I love what Ted said about this being a journey. It has been a journey. It's been exciting. It's been hard, but what is incredible is that what I'm seeing is we're really truly at that sweet spot. And the sweet spot is, is that we've done our due diligence, we've had a community process. Just this year, we've had already five public meetings. We are, we have a website and we are collectively as the partners of T-HAC standing in locked arms, moving together with a model. So it's pretty exciting. I wanted to speak a little bit about the outreach. It's never enough and it's never perfect, but I wanted to clarify a few points. On October 14th, Nevada County had a closed session to review a request from T-HAC to begin negotiations on the lease for the Deerfield Drive. Only after that period could we go out and start the public outreach process. And so we went out, we should have gone out on the 15th and I apologize, but we went out on the 17th. And then last night, we did our first neighborhood meeting. Of course, it's not enough time to go out to our neighbors, but we are doing our best to continue that conversation and we will do so moving forward. I also wanted to speak about the word pilot. We did a lot of research on navigation centers and a lot of the research points to starting with a pilot and starting with a temporary site as a really excellent way to bring this model into a community. It doesn't mean that we're not committed to this model. It just means that with Pacific Crest Commons opening next July and providing 10 permanent supportive units in our community, we're not sure how everything's going to land and what the need's going to be. So having a pilot and being able to test what, and, and track data and have a better understanding in a year of who's using the services, who's going onto permanent housing will be very helpful. So thank you everyone.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else in the chambers that wants, wishes to make public comment? I'm not seeing anybody. Are there any additional callers?
No further callers.
Okay. Then I'm going to close the public comment. Obviously, anybody who's here, I'm sure you'll be at the meeting this afternoon and, and tonight have the opportunity to address your concerns with the town council as well. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for coming and expressing that to us this evening. So I will bring it back to the board for comments or, or questions on this. And just so you know, what we are voting on today is just to accept this presentation that was made to us. There's many more steps I believe that are going to occur before this gets approved is my understanding. Yeah, no, that's okay. Yeah. Ryan shaking his head yes, so. Hardy, you want to start?
Sure. Thank you. Thanks to everybody who showed up to share your concerns with us and I want to acknowledge the opposition in the room and at the different public venues that we've had reaching out. And we understand this has an impact on you and it has an impact on other community members. And so I just want to honor what you've told us and let you know that we hear you. We talk a lot about how to mitigate those and how we can change the characteristics of the program in serving the community to meet your needs as well. So we have, it's, it's been a long road, many years, years plural in this subject. Having a lot of monthly meetings here and a lot of outreach meetings. Shawna highlighted some of them, but not all of them, particularly in 2024, late '24 and early '25, we had a whole flurry of meetings and a lot of times until the, until something's located or cited, we, it's hard for us to actually point to a direction that would actually impact somebody and give you the proper outreach. I just want to mention, I know we're short on time, so I'm going to keep all this very brief. A homeless story, we often ask ourselves like, who is the homeless population in our town? I met with the other night a preschool teacher that was involved in raising my two children here in Truckee and I have not kept track of her, but she came to find me because she had seen the work that we've done on T-HAC and wanted to tell me that she's become homeless over the last course of the number of years, three or four years. She lives in her car. She's a multi-clag credentialed teacher. She is educated by trade. She helped raise our kids and raised many other kids in this community and she's now finds herself homeless because she can't afford to pay for a place to live. And so I thought it was touching that she found somebody that she thinks can make a difference and I'm asking all of you to consider her story because it's not somebody who has fallen on hard times based on their own behavior and pattern of dysfunction or, or illness or substance use disorder. This is a regular person that was a member of our family and closely held kind of tight-knit community member who we know and love. And Kathy, you know, uses this affectionate term friends and neighbors, which I've adopted too and I say it a lot, but it's the closest description of our homeless population that I can recognize. So I just wanted to say thanks and pass that story along on behalf of my friend. I want to mention there's a bunch of documents related to this topic. So there's four years of study work, a bunch of data, a bunch of community surveys, massive amounts of outreach that have been summarized on our website. If you go to the website, I don't have it in front of me right now, but I know Shawna does. Please go look at that and you can see the data on why we've arrived at this solution and what community voices have been included, including the oppositional voices and understanding what the community needs. We had a really rough period early this year, understanding what the community wanted and how to get there. We listened to that. We pivoted. We grew. We changed and now we're together, coming together to make this solution. It is a balance of action and outreach and we will not get people out from the weather elements where it's freezing if we just continue a cycle of outreach and community input. There are a lot of voices. We need to take action and help people survive this winter. There's no promise of a future shelter. It's one really important step we need to understand is that the funding, all the organizations are talking about and the support that each organization is pledging to make a pilot project is just that. We have absolutely no plans and have not even discussed or described the potential funding elements or the sustainable elements related to the community outreach or a final location for any of our homeless services provision here in Eastern County. So just everybody needs to understand that once we can get people off the street and get them into wraparound services in a shelter environment, we need to go right back into the office and we need to roll up our sleeves and start all over again with the same players and probably some new players and people that may not like what we're doing and we need to figure out how to do it again for the next year. So I just wanted to put that very plainly and plain speak that this is not a foregone conclusion, nor is it a permanent conclusion. We're going to be here together as a community. I've talked to 58 counties across California. I've talked to 3,000 counties across the nation and they all say the same thing to me. If you talk to leaders from California State Association of Counties and NACO and the League of Cities, you will not solve this problem alone. No single jurisdiction can do it. We can only do it with the people that are located in this room and through T-HAC. So we, we won't do it alone. We're not going to try and do it alone and that's why the conditions related to the use of the town zoning and ordinance and things like that are so important to this process. We need to come to this together and that's the only way we'll solve it. I'm going to leave it there, but I just wanted to mention, T-HAC is an entity, has monthly meetings that are open to the public. So if you're listening to this and you think that you want to talk about where supportive housing or shelter location may be located and you're not, it's not next to you right now, please come and tell us what you think because if this doesn't work or we move it or we find another permanent sustainable location, we're going to want those voices in the room. Every single month we meet, every single month, you're welcome to come and we will, we don't have a clock, we'll sit there and listen to you as long as you want. And when the meeting's done, we'll congregate and talk to you some more. So please be involved and, you know, involve yourself in the process and we'll try and get there as a team together. I'm, I'm really proud of the work the town's done. I'm very proud of the work the hospital's done. I, I would like to commend the elected and appointed officials that represent the town and the hospital and doing the heavy, you know, the really the heavy lifting to make sure that they are representing the best interest of their organization. We have arm wrestled. We have argued. We have been very passionate about the differences between the organizations and I just wanted to commend the town and the hospital both for their representation, for their elected leadership and taking care of themselves. We've done it together, so I'm really proud of that.
Yeah, I appreciate all the viewpoints and I tend to defer to the local leaders who have eloquently kind of outlined the positions and the need and all that. I do want to say I'm very sympathetic to Martina and Julie and the residents' concerns. And building on that, I think the caller who called in, I do have even more concerns about the impacts that we're seeing in Grass Valley. I think it's a different situation up here and regarding the location, my understanding is that this is a highway commercial property, close proximity to a gas station, Interstate 80. So I, I feel like although the, the resident concerns are, are very valid and hope to see them mitigated to the full extent as best we can, I think it, it's different for me than a residential zoning that we're trying to put something in. This is kind of what it's zoned for. So anyways, I know there'll be a lot more discussions going forward, but for, for me, I, and I'm encouraged to see the level of collaboration amongst all these entities up here. And it's something that I don't, I, I, I tend to support the local leadership and the consensus there. So I'll look forward to seeing this go forward. I do appreciate the pilot nature of it. I think on some other issues, we'd be well-served in doing that as well. And it sounds like there's a lot of different directions this could go in the future, whether it's permanent or locations moved. So I'll look forward to following it, but I, I appreciate all the input.
Thanks. Do you?
I think it's all been said, but I did, what I did appreciate was the thoughtful conversations that happened today. Sometimes they're not always so thoughtful and it just shows what a community could do when you come together and make things happen. So even for you folks that live in the neighborhood, thank you. I think that was some, I think there's still more good conversations to come and I think that this is how we get it done. So really appreciated that today and thanks Hardy. I mean, I know this has been a tough year, but you know, the snow's flowed twice. It's already cold up here. So I think that having to move forward and look how we get through this, this year is going to be really important, but thank you really.
Thanks. Yes, thanks. Thank you for, everybody for coming and, and commenting on this. Obviously, there's going to be a lot more discussion about it this evening. I will just say that having, I've lived this for over 30 years in my district, first as a planning commissioner, then as a city council person in the city of Grass Valley and now as the third, third district supervisor. There is no perfect solution. There is no perfect location. And I really think that what you've come up with here potentially has, has the opportunity to succeed. I've also lived in very close proximity to the navigation center, to our homeless facility in Grass Valley. And I will tell you that there is more oversight and more, I guess, you know, more, more direction that happens with those facilities because you have local law enforcement, you have our caseworkers from the county, you have your Volunteers of America. There's so many people who oversee the work that does, that happens here. It really It really, I just want to say, I hope that will alleviate some of the fears that maybe the neighbors have because you really, they're so closely monitored and the second that there's a problem, people step in to take care of it. And that was always a very big concern in Grass Valley. And I've watched the collaboration there. It's a lot different than here as far as public outreach. Truckee has it down. You guys always have. Public outreach, community collaboration, taking your time to make thoughtful decisions is, is, is very admirable. You know, my district is similar in, in Hardy's district that more, more than half of my district is the city of Grass Valley. So we have to collaborate. I believe that, you know, your district is majority the town of Truckee. That collaboration for this work is really, really important. So I would ask people to have an open mind, to work really closely with the partners that you're bringing in, which I think are, I just, I look at the passion of people who speak about it. If you haven't had the opportunity to ever volunteer in homeless services, I highly recommend it. It is very rewarding. I've participated in, you know, volunteering at our local shelter in the point of, in time counts that we do. You will get a whole different perspective on the people that you're serving, and it will really alleviate your fears about the people that you're serving. So I look forward to more discussion. I'm going to try and stay this evening so that I can listen to your meeting and kind of see what direction that you all go in. So with that, I would ask for a motion to accept our presentation that we just heard.
I'll move to accept.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yep.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. So we are running a little bit behind. We are now going to adjourn into lunch in a closed session. At this time, I would take any comments on closed session?
So I will probably need to read you into closed session.
Okay, read us into closed session, Kit.
And then you can take public comment. And it's, it is with regard to, our closed session is on number 25. It is with regard to the same property that we've been discussing, and that is negotiating lease terms for the Deerfield property as stated in the agenda.
Thank you. Any comments on the closed session item? No? All right. So we are going to adjourn into lunch and closed session, and we are going to come back at 1:45.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the Hardy Plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it, it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council. And the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home. And really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home. So when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer, and that's used to disperse medication that I need to get myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets, if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed, the power may be out. So you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as in evacuating.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 211 call center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 211 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That could be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 211 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in Paradise. And first, the house phone rang, picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we, we didn't get too far from the house, and we're watching a fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there. And it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air. And I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening, and I prayed for the people behind me.
10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire. And they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son who lives next door picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance, to have that group of people that they were going to call. And that, she saved my life that day. So absolutely, having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county, and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that go piece. And it's simply that, it's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order, not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol, came in, and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residences that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very, you know, clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
I mean, you look out my back window here on the east side, and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock, and at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do. And the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, you know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community, in a county, that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate. We've created this network, and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 211. We're here to support you.
From the foothills of the Sierra Nevada, a new hero will emerge. One who is ready. One who makes sure their friends and family are set. And has the power to go at a moment's notice. This fire season, you're the hero. We are Ready Nevada County.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of an emergency.
Zone Haven and Knowing Your Zone does not replace NICSOL and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them and it makes those tools more powerful because you will know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio or it could be us driving down the street. So please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville. Every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone. And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise. To prepare residents, to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council. And the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home. And really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home. So when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea. So we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer. And that's used to disperse medication that I need to get myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house. But then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets, if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed, the power may be out. So you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacu- week.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name is Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 211 Call Center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 211 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That could be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 211 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in Paradise. And first, the house phone rang, picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house. And we're watching the fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there. And it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air. And I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening. And I prayed for the people behind me.
A 10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire. And they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son who lives next door, picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance to have that group of people that they were going to call. And that she saved my life that day. So absolutely, having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county, and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that "go" piece. And it's simply that, it's "go." Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order. Not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol. Came in and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones Fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residences that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
I mean, you look out my back window here on the east side and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock. And at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do. And the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, you know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community, in a county, that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate.
We've created this network and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council, or 211. We're here to support you.
From the foothills of the Sierra Nevada, a new hero will emerge. One who is ready. One who makes sure their friends and family are set. And has the power to go at a moment's notice. This fire season, you're the hero. We are Ready Nevada County.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of an emergency.
Zone Haven and Knowing Your Zone does not replace NICSOL and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them and it makes those tools more powerful because you will know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio or it could be us driving down the street. So please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville. Every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone. And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
The hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council. And the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home. And really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home. So when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer, and that's used to disperse medication that I need to give myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed, the power may be out, so you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuette.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name is Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 211 Call Center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 211 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That could be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 211 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in paradise. And first, the house phone rang. Picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house, and we're watching a fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there. And it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air. And I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding, and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening, and I prayed for the people behind me.
10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire. And they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son who lives next door picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance to have that group of people that they were going to call. And that, she saved my life that day. So absolutely, having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county, and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that go piece. And it's simply that, it's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order. Not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol. Came in and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones Fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residences that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
You look out my back window here on the east side, and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock. And at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do. And the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, you know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community, in a county, that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate.
We've created this network, and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 211. We're here to support you.
From the foothills of the Sierra Nevada, a new hero will emerge. One who is ready. One who makes sure their friends and family are set. And has the power to go at a moment's notice. This fire season, you're the hero. We are Ready Nevada County.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven, and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and Knowing Your Zone does not replace NICSOL and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them, and it makes those tools more powerful because you will know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio, or it could be us driving down the street. So please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville, every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone. And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council. And the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home, and really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home. So when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer, and that's used to disperse medication that I need to get myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed, the power may be out, so you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuee.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 211 Call Center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 211 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 211 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in paradise. And first, the house phone rang. Picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were welcomed by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house, and we're watching a fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there, and it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air. And I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding, and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening, and I prayed for the people behind me.
A 10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire, and they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son, who lives next door, picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance, to have that group of people that they were going to call. And she saved my life that day. So absolutely, having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county, and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that go piece, and it's simply that. It's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order. Not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol. Came in and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones Fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residences that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
Okay, we ready? All right, we are here to start our afternoon session. Sorry that we're running a little bit behind today. Our first item is...
For me to read you back in from closed session?
I'm sorry. Thank you, Kit. Get it keep me on track.
There we go. With regard to the closed session, information and direction was given to staff.
Great. Okay, we're ready to go? All right. So our first item up is a resolution proclaiming November 8th through 16th as Military Appreciation Week in Nevada County. And there we have Rachel. Welcome.
Hi, thank you so much. Good afternoon. It's nice to be in Truckee. And my name's Rachel Penya. I'm the Director of Social Services, and I'm here with Sergeant David West, our Veterans Service Officer, to give you a presentation about what his office has been doing on behalf of veterans and our entire community, and also to proclaim Military Appreciation Week. So I'm going to turn it over to him. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Chair of the board, ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for allowing me to be here today. Thank you for the invite. Real quick. Next slide, please. There we go. All right, so Military Appreciation Week. Military Appreciation Week, this is going to be the fourth year of Military Appreciation Week. It's going to be November 8th through the 16th. This is a week that is originated to show appreciation to our local veterans. It's an opportunity for local businesses coming out of post-COVID recovery to stimulate the economy. It's done so well. We have over 100 businesses that continue to provide services. Throughout this week, we're going to have the Root Center, the VSO Office, the Veterans' Memorial Building, all lit up green to highlight the need for resources for veterans in rural communities. We have a flag retirement ceremony done by the local scouts from flags that are collected through the seven different receptacles throughout the county. And finally, we're going to be celebrating the 250th birthday of the United States Marine Corps. It's going to be a big day that week. So the mission of the Nevada County Veterans Services Officers is we're advocates for the 10% of our population that are veterans. In addition to the 10%, we also have surviving spouses and dependents that we take care of and advocate for and make sure they have the resources needed to thrive in their community. We're mostly known for filing claims for compensation, that's injuries or diseases that result of their service. There is also a wartime pension benefit available for our low-income veterans who served during war. And that's what we do. We help veterans access the services and benefits that they earned as a result of their service. We do this on a budget, just under $850,000. That fully staffs 4500. That fully staffs four, that's myself, Jessica Lanier, Tracy Hart. Those are our Veteran Services representatives. And we just have our first-time-ever office assistants, so thank you very much. Nicole Carter, who has been helping us, so now when veterans call, we can guarantee that the phone's being answered and they're being taken care of. In Nevada County, veterans receive over $48.5 million annually. So far this year, we have generated $5.4 million in benefits for our local veterans. However, we've generated $7.3 million in benefits total locally. And that's because sometimes we'll have veterans come over from other counties that seek out our services through the great work they've heard from their friends here in Nevada County. And we've become a model for our services provided. Last year, we were visited by Glen County, who up until recently never had a VSO. And they came wanting to see how our office was ran. And now not only do they have their first-ever VSO, but it's structured under DSS. And they're following a lot of the lessons that we've learned here in Nevada County on how to support their Veteran Services Office. Forecast. Last year, this year, the Board of Supervisors took a position to support Senate Bill 694. That's California Senate Bill 694. What this bill does is it aims to protect veterans from predatory for-profit companies. What these companies do is they target veterans in a time of need, when they're trying to access services for treatment. And due to their large marketing budget, when veterans reach in and they ask how to access benefits, these for-profit companies come up. They are then charged upwards of $20,000 for assistance filing for claims that federally is illegal. The problem is that in 2006, the federal law, the penalties were taken out. So even though it's still illegal, there is no penalties for illegal behavior. And what this bill does is it aims to put those penalties back in. And this issue is much more complicated than just supporting veterans and not being preyed upon by these for-profit companies. Recently, there was an article put out in the Washington Post that highlighted the fraud and abuse that is happening in veterans' benefits. And on some of my trips to Washington DC, we're pushing back on what is called a means test. Meaning that if a veteran served in Afghanistan and Iraq and they stepped on an IED and lost both their legs, but they make more than $125,000 due to their motivational speaking and overcoming, they can no longer get those VA benefits. There's discussions when veterans turn 65, that they can only get their social security benefits. And when veterans are service-connected 20% or 10%, that they're only allowed to get VA healthcare, no compensation for that. And the reason why these ideas are being discussed is because they keep pointing back to these for-profit companies that guarantee 100% to veterans, that are manipulating medical exam forms, and are generally just bad for veterans here in California. So we're really pushing to get this bill passed in California, so there are other states will fall in line. And I really support that, I'm really appreciative that the Board of Supervisors is so strong in backing this bill. HR1, HR1 has caused implications for all county services. And that's just going to drive more veterans that we're dependent on these services to our office for assistance. And Prop 1, known as Prop 63, we get Prop 63 funding in our office just under $100,000 a year through two different sources. When Prop 1 came, when it was voted on by the Veterans of California, there's going to be some reallocation of money and how that's distributed. And we're just making sure, and here in Nevada County, we know that we're going to continue to get funded on that. But that is a potential forecast problem. And the federal reduction in workforce, this has really inhibited the veterans in Nevada County with access to VA healthcare. Auburn outpatient clinic, the VA Auburn outpatient clinic, it takes about four months right now for our veterans to be seen for mental health. Luckily, we're able to connect them through our local resources for treatment in two to three weeks. However, there's also not any doctors on staff. So when veterans are going there, they're seeing nurses, they're seeing nurse practitioners. And if it's a really serious, it's something they need to do, they're going to tell health to a doctor in another faraway state. And it's really not making our veterans feel comfortable. And finally, the government shutdown. The VA, the Veterans Hospital Administration is funded for a year. However, we are seeing problems in the way educational benefits are being distributed. And it is slowing down the claims process for veterans due to the skeleton crew. And there's no access for having questions for the general public. Here we go. All right, so highlighting the needs of Nevada County. We're going to be focused on ending veterans homelessness. We're still focused on veterans homelessness. And over the coming months, we're going to pull it out, call it action for anybody in Nevada County that has a housing opportunity to offer. Whether that be a home, an ADU, or what is available. We just encourage veterans to please reach out to my office or to the homeless program. CSAC Conference, I'm going to get an opportunity, I've been asked to participate in the CSAC Conference, where I'm going to highlight the benefits of a VSO and their county, and also on Senate Bill 694, and a fellowship program we're working on. So I'm really excited about that, to do that. And just some leadership, I want to highlight that in 2024, I was elected President of the California Association of County Veteran Services Officers. My term is coming up in February. I was recently re-elected to the Vice Chair of the State Commander's Council. And I continue to serve on the National Association of County Veteran Services Officers E-Board. And it's all through the support that everybody in Nevada County provides me. We have our Veterans Outreach and Wellness Program. That is our mental health program, and guitars for vets, and really trying to find alternate resources for veterans to talk about their feelings, or find something to reduce their stress other than just talking about their problems. And we are also currently participating in University of California study. We were asked by the Los Angeles County, along with Santa Clara County, to highlight the benefits that veterans and their families get by connecting with their local Veteran Services Office and how we benefit them. So right now, I think we have like 179 participants in Nevada County at that. And they're getting a small stipend to participate through the college. And finally, we're focused on Eastern Nevada County. We really want to expand services here. We're up here the first and third Friday of every month. We're contemplating, doing a Veterans Health and Wellness Fair that is similar to the one we have in Grass Valley up here, specific for the Veterans of Truckee. We do get a lot of veterans from the Reno area due to the fact that they don't have Veteran Services Officer in Nevada, so a lot get referred up here. And I'm sure they seek services from this area as well. We want to highlight that any veteran that lives up here in Truckee, all they have to do is reach out to us, is veteransatruckee@nevadacounty.ca.gov. And they got their own special email. We have our own special outreach materials directing them to our offices. And we're also in the early stages of collaboration with Placer and El Dorado County to figure out how all three of our counties can work together to better serve the veterans in all three of our target areas. And that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Any questions for David?
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
When and where is the Marines 250-year local celebration?
I got it, and I'll send you the invite.
Okay, I got it. I have to bring my dad.
Yes, yes.
He's 90 years old, and one of his proudest things in his life was serving as a US Marine.
Yes, ma'am. I do know it's $50, but I will send you the invite.
I will cover that with any problem, so, thank you. I'm so happy to see that you're doing it. I know that I've been really appreciative of all the work that you've done. I've attended a few of your events over the last few years. And I think the veterans in our community are better for having you at their service. So thank you for everything that you have done.
All right, yeah.
Military Appreciation Week, is that, I think there's, saw some emails flying around, is that happening next?
Yeah, so Military Appreciation Week, and I think you might be talking about Armed Forces Day.
Armed Forces, that's next.
Go Armed Forces Day separate, thank you.
Armed Forces Day, Armed Forces Day. Right now, planning's a little difficult. We're getting a lot of return to emails due to the shutdown. But yes, we are planning, we are advanced in our planning. But we are going to continue to work on that.
Okay, great, thanks.
All right.
I just want to say thank you, your team, you guys do amazing things. I still hear from the folks at Glen County when you guys pulled that together for them, and the changes that they're making there in their office. And sometimes it's the big things, but sometimes it's the little things that you take the time to do that are so special. And I just want to commend all of you for that work. And thanks, David, for your interaction, especially at the state and the national level, really, where you are advocating, and I think that's so important. So I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, is there any public comment on this item? None in the chambers, are there any calls?
No callers.
Okay, great, we'll close public comment. And we have two action items that we need to take care of. The first is a motion to adopt the resolution for Military Appreciation Week, November 8th through November 16th.
So moved.
Second.
All right, roll call.
District 5.
Yes.
District 2.
Yes.
District 4.
Yes.
District 3.
Yes.
District 1 is absent.
Great, all right. And our second is a vote to accept the presentation that we just heard.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye, and you opposed?
Just one more quick mention, I just wanted to let you know, David, I mean, from time to time, we get emails just in support of your office and you. They are not lost on us, and I know many of us, hey, thanks a lot. But I just want to acknowledge that the board receives routine emails about quality of your service and your service and dedication of the veterans. Just want to thank you for that.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that, sir. But it all goes back to your leadership, and the board, and Allison's leadership and everybody. I know that not every county supports their Veteran Services Officers and their veterans the way that Nevada County does. And I am very cognizant of that fact. And it only happens because of the support you guys provide. And allowing me to do things, so thank you.
Well, it is kind of fun to think back, I remember when you first came. Like, the whole thought about being in front of the microphone was like, Dave was like-
And he's a-
And now-
You're a pro now.
I know, I know. So like, it's come so far, and I just think it's exciting. And it is really appreciated, I think the community really feels it. So I just remember that first presentation at the board. So you have come a long way, my friend.
Thank you, thank you very much, ma'am.
And I think seeing your name up there for that USC study with Los Angeles, Santa Clara, and Nevada County, that's very impressive. Usually, they go to big counties, and so you're doing everything right and representing our community very well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Right. Okay. So next on the agenda was announcements, but we are going to pass on those for this meeting and listen to our next presentation, which is Housing and Community Services Director Tyler Barrington. You're giving us the informational presentation regarding the Pacific Crest Commons. Welcome.
Correct, thank you very much. I'd like to pass over Supervisor Hook to start out, just introduce the item, if she's prepared.
Well, I don't know about how prepared, but I am excited about this process. I really love being on the Regional Housing Authority, and this is one of those kind of projects. And I'm excited for you all to come see it. Having been to Idaho and actually got to watch where they were built was very exciting. And then to come here and watch them actually be installed. I think it was really fortunate that it was here in a county close enough where I could just drive up here and take a peek. In fact, some of our staff went during RCRC. We saw the first parts of them built, and then to drive in today and see the outside facade and the roof go on. So Tyler, I'm really happy to have you supported me in Regional Housing Authority, and take it away.
Great, thank you very much. So this project is a, it's been a partnership, it's a regional partnership. Essentially, the Regional Housing Authority is kind of the lead developer. And then their contractor, Truckee Pacific Crest Associates, is kind of leading the overall application for the different various funding sources, as well as the construction part. It's somewhat unique in that it's located on a former CHP site, and it was part of the Surplus Lands Act, or the Excessive Sites Program. And so, you know, part of that program, you're required to offer up a government-owned property that becomes surplus to affordable housing developers. And so, the Regional Housing Authority jumped on the opportunity. The site's approximately 1.7 acres. It's zoned in Truckee under the corridor mixed-use, which allows for up to 12 to 24 dwelling units per acre. It's actually because it's under the authority of the state, the entitlement process didn't go through the town of Truckee, it actually went through the State Department of General Services as the approval agency, and it was found to be exempt from CEQA as an infill project. So the project itself, it's a 55-unit multifamily development. It's consisting of two buildings that are three stories, which is relatively tall for Nevada County. The first building has 25 units, and then the second building is 30 units. It's a 100% affordable housing project to at least 80% of the area median income and below. But it also has 10 set-aside units for homeless that will be qualified at 30% of the AMI. And those units are required to be supported and staffed by the county, staff from behavioral health department to help the residents there with their daily needs. The access itself is provided off of 89, excuse me. And then their secondary access along Donna Way. The project itself has several little picnic areas, it has a laundry, it has a 3,400 square foot open, or common space, and then there are some art access areas. Sorry, bear with me. Oops, too far. Okay, so I won't go into all the details of this, but this slide just demonstrates the kind of the tapestry of funding sources it takes to put a project like this together. There's federal tax credits, state tax credits, there's state funding through HCD, such as a no-place-like-at-home grant, that's a grant that kind of allocates for those homeless units. There's also local match funding, which Nevada County participated in the program. And that match funding is important because it was necessary in order for the applicant to qualify for their tax credits. You can see the town of Truckee also put in a significant amount of money, as well as the MARTIS Fund, and then the Regional Housing Authority themselves. In total, the project is approximately $37, $38 million to bring it forward. And then some of these pictures I actually got from the developer there, the units being constructed in place. And then, as Supervisor Hook mentioned, the units themselves are built off-site in Napa, Idaho, by a company called Audivall. And so I have a few pictures of the plant itself. I don't know that these are the specific units being built here at the Pacific Crest Commons, but it's just an example of their showroom. They have a giant, I believe it's 400,000 square feet, and about 275 or so employees, but a lot of it's done through robotics. So the project itself was started in June of this year. I believe they staged the units up at Soto Springs and then brought them down. And as you can see, they've gone up very fast. They're hoping for completion by November of next year. And as Supervisor Hook mentioned, we will be doing a site visit. The developer, the superintendent, is aware of your presence and is waiting for you to show you around. And I want to thank Mandy Stewart for the photos. She snuck around the site last week to give me some photos of the buildings in progress. So like I said, this project, it was a long time coming. It took a lot of work from both the Housing and Community Services Division, my predecessor, as well as the Regional Housing Authority, the town of Truckee, and some other partners to bring it forward. And it's a significant, large, affordable project in the town of Truckee. And so, really proud of it coming forward. So that concludes my presentation. And like I said, we'll have a site visit with the construction team a little bit later to kind of walk you where they're at in the process.
Great, thanks Tyler. Any questions for Tyler? Arty?
Thanks Tyler, appreciate everybody's help in bringing this together. And Sue, I'm excited you guys are there to be the voice for that, the advocacy in that Rural Housing Authority. One of the questions, previous projects in Truckee have had different populations mingled, so Artist Lofts and then Cold Street Commons, I'm sorry, Cold Street Commons have been mixed together. And I think the board had a lively discussion a long time ago now, but related to the oversight, who's the oversight for managing the population within the housing? That's question number one, just wondering what you talked about, a little bit of our staff having wraparound service from support?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know a lot of details. I know that, you know, the 10 units will be supported by behavioral health department and have the wraparound services. The remaining units will be qualified through, I believe, the Regional Housing Authority. And I think there are some project-based vouchers that are associated with it. And there are a split in the income levels. As I mentioned, there are some, 10 of the units are restricted to 30% and below the area median- As I mentioned, there are some, 10 of the units are restricted to 30% and below the area median income. And then the remainder are below 80%. And I have some notes here, and I thought some of them might have been in the 60 category as part of their application. But I just don't have it right in front of me. But I do know that there's a mix of income. And they'll go through a long process, a process to ensure that residents that live there meet the income qualifications.
Yeah. So the 10 supportive beds will have support staff from our team. But then the other 40, is there a live-in manager or who's in charge of all that?
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't actually know offhand. But I believe it's treated like any other apartment complex. So my assumption is there will be a property management company and likely an onsite manager.
Okay. We'll have to get more info on that. And then the placement criteria for the 10 supportive beds. Again, same thing that happened in Artist's Lofts and others. A lot of conversations about, hey, there's all these placements coming from outside the area, and we have our own population here that we're actually dedicating a lot of local resources to serve. So just wondering about that.
Turn over a few for that.
The 10 supportive beds specifically are under the auspices of Behavioral Health. So they would be specifically for people with documented behavioral health needs who are experiencing homelessness, who are at risk of homelessness, and are from the local community. So it's very similar to at Brunswick Commons. There's 10 beds there that similarly are supported in the same way, separate from the rest of the beds.
Okay. Yeah, thanks for answering that.
Any other questions? No. Sue, any questions? Questions for Rob?
The construction timeline, it's not a big deal if it's a typo. When it's referencing '26, like a year from now?
Correct.
Oh, okay. So I was of next year. Gotcha. I only questioned it because when we were out there, I was just amazed at how quickly they went from the Soda Springs storage area, it says ski resort, to bring them over on-site. And within days, even when we just visited them at RCRC, it looked like they were finished. So, okay, so people will be moving in.
Yeah, after November 2026 or after their final occupancy. It's going to, you know, it'll take a while for the facade and the grounds and all that stuff to kind of come up to the renderings that you see on your screen.
Cool.
Yeah, you can't.
Sure. Okay, that makes sense.
So now for the winter, though, well, I think Brian will give you a lowdown on that. Because you can do all the inside stuff now, but not so much the outside stuff.
Great. All right. So I will open it up for public comment. Is there anybody that wishes to speak on this item? Any phone calls?
No callers.
Okay, seeing, oh, sure. Come on up.
Hi, Shawna Doherty. And I am with, I'm a senior manager with Agnewback Consulting. So very excited to see this project go through. We've done a couple of site tours with the Tau Truckee Homeless Action Coalition. Also, when I was at the town of Truckee, we noticed that this surplus site was listed in the governor's plan for addressing housing. And called them up, and it's been a long journey. And we appreciate Nevada County's diligence to get to this point. And when we did the site tour, they said it might be as early as July. So we're pretty excited about that. Thanks so much.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other public comment, we will close public hearing. Bring it back to the board for any final comments or questions. So I just, I think that issue of the property manager is something that needs to, there needs to be a definitive answer on that. Because I know that that has been a bit of a contentious issue with the Brunswick Commons. Different project, different population of people. But that will become a question for law enforcement or for the town or for the, you know, the county if there are issues there. And there isn't, there wasn't a clear agreement about having a property manager there. And so if we could, you know, maybe find that out and bring that back.
Yeah, I can look it up and follow up with the board.
Okay. Yeah.
We had the same convo with Loan Oak, I think.
Yeah, I mean, typically, they have some sort of manager, and whether they're a local company or an onsite unit. I don't recall reading that there was a designated managership.
It's a huge difference between having local management versus having an onsite person. So something that we just need to be prepared if there isn't an onsite person for whatever might pop up with the whole thing.
I'll research that. Get back to you.
Great. I mean, great project. I'm really excited to get to tour it this afternoon. I think seeing those modules go up so quickly has been fascinating. So thank you for that. All right. If there's no further questions or discussion, Allison?
So for logistics, before you adjourn, I'll lean on Tyler in terms of once the Vice Chair adjourns the meeting, we're asking board members to park at the Safeway across the street from the development. Is that correct?
That I wasn't aware of.
Okay, so just so you know, yeah, if you could park across at the Safeway, it should be great. If you do park at Bank America, make sure you use the top parking lot, not the one at the bottom, like where the drive-through and everything is. So there could be a few, but the Safeway is a crossway, and just be careful crossing the crossway.
Okay, so thank you. That's helpful. So there's not going to be parking onsite.
There's no parking onsite, is what you're saying.
Yes. And so park in one of those areas, and then we will meet in front of the complex where you'll receive a tour and overview.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay. I would ask for a motion in a second to accept the presentation.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, motion carries. Great. Okay, we did it. And we're almost, we almost got caught up. So thank you all for attending our meeting here in Truckee. We are now going to adjourn and go visit the Pacific Crest Commons.